All right, it is 7:05 PM and I will call this meeting of the Old Tarek Board of Education to order. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and we'll start off this evening with our community communications and our report from our student Board of Education representatives. And I see that both of you are on, so take it away, Megan and Joe.
Hi, everybody. Thank you again for having us. We're very happy to be here. I'm going to get the student reports started. The first thing that we wanted to discuss going on at the high school is that we have a sort of tentative update about the OSHS musical this year. We've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Milton and Director Lenore Grunko, and they've talked about how where we will likely be doing something this year, probably not super traditional. We're thinking about probably doing a couple of like multiple vignettes from a number of different musicals. And hopefully, like those individual scenes or songs from musicals that we really like and have never gotten to perform before could be performed by, you know, one, two, three people up on stage, and then that could hopefully be livestreamed to anyone that is not currently because there wouldn't be anybody attending in person. So that's something we believe we're going to get started up in the next couple of weeks. So rehearsals will probably begin at some point in January. It will be full masks. But you know, the Drama Club is very excited to be able to do at least something this year. So that's something that we'll have more updates on moving forward.
All right, so to move forward, prior to winter break, we had an announcement on the midterms decision for the year. So Ms. Riffle announced that there is going to be no conventional midterm this year. Instead, these days are going to be full days of school as opposed to half days. And the .1 credit that is usually allotted to midterms will be taken out of the calculations of grade this year. And this calculation was done by the math department to make sure that this wasn't really going to mess up anything big, but it seems like everything's going to work out fine. Some AP and UConn courses may still give midterms for practice, but there's not going to be any grades for these assessments. And teachers at other levels such as CP and honor art, some teachers are going to use this time to review. Some teachers are still going to give some type of test and just not count it, just kind of as a review of knowledge. Some teachers are going to use this time to continue moving forward if they feel that their class is behind. So every teacher is really handling this differently, but in the end, there will not be midterms.
So another update at the high school, the Rambler newspaper released a 12-pager before winter break, which was the longest one that I've ever experienced, which I'm very happy we were able to get that out. That was a great time. And we're hopefully going to have similarly in-depth editions moving forward because we have like a really our staff this year has lots of gusto and they're putting out lots of great stuff. So hopefully going forward, we're going to have similarly long and in-depth editions, which we're very excited about.
Next up, we have weekly advisory meetings. So students have been viewing virtual advisory meetings every Tuesday throughout the month of January for about 30 minutes to cover various topics, anywhere from self-care to college and career readiness. Last week's advisory was a presentation from the College and Career Readiness Staff, Miss Using and Ms. Fawcett, about the future of college and career readiness within the graduation requirement and different ways that students are going to be able to fill this requirement. This week, the senior class had a one-on-one meeting with Ms. Fawcett and Ms. Using to further that conversation and have it be more specific towards what the seniors can do and kind of setting the seniors up for the spring and what their college readiness is going to look like with scholarships. If seniors are finishing up applications and stuff like that, and then the underclassmen had a different presentation.
Thank you. And then another thing at the high school is that, you know, moving forward, we've had a sort of winter sports have been sort of slowing the uptake understandably this year due to COVID and everything. So the CAA had a meeting on January 7th to discuss winter sports, and they decided that they're on track to start January 19th and that these, the initial precautions and strategies because of COVID-19 will be shared with schools moving forward. There's another meeting planned for January 14th to further discuss and review guidance from the Department of Public Health. So definitely the students are happy that we're going to be able to get winter sports underway relatively soon.
To finish up on our report tonight, we have the NHS induction. So on December 21st, there was a virtual National Honor Society induction. This year, there were 27 new inductees. And although the induction was online, the seniors did a great job to make a video about each of the students that were being inducted. This was put into an iMovie, which was presented during the induction. So the induction was done through Google Meet, and it was practically all on the video. It started with Mr. Flager, who is in charge of NHS. He did a little talk, and then it was an iMovie with all the presentations put together and everything. So it was a really good induction, although even with COVID, it was still very special for those inductees. But yeah, that's all we have. So if anyone has any questions, please let us know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, very much. A great presentation, and I thought that was an impressive Rambler to you, Joe. That was a lot of I was like, wow, this is a real newspaper. Impressive. So, um, questions for student representatives? Eileen? And you're still on mute? There we go.
I said fabulous report. You're both very sophisticated in your public speaking. Hard to imagine that you're high school students. I think it's really exciting about the Old Sabley High School musical update. I think that'll be really fun and at the same time capture what Joe said, the opportunity for some music and costuming of shows that maybe hadn't been selected. I think that's really exciting, and so I'm looking forward to that. And the Rambler update, is there a way to get a copy of that?
Yeah, I believe it was sent out virtually to most of, to all the students and all the staff. I can see if I can find that and maybe I can send it over to Mr. Gerbers, and then he can send that out.
That would be terrific.
Of course.
And additionally, I would, it's terrific in terms of the weekly advisory meetings. I think it's a great opportunity. Are students able to generate some of the topics that they would like to see addressed during the weekly advisory meetings? Who sets the agenda for that?
Um, I think so far it's been done mostly through guidance, but I know in the past that students have been involved in the topics. But this year, we had a slow start with COVID. We didn't start advisory until I think November, December. But I think hoping in the future, we'll be able to get involved in those conversations.
That'd be terrific. Congratulations to everybody who got into the National Honor Society. And if there's a way, do you know if they saved that link to be able to watch it?
I can, I can answer that, Megan and Joe. I'll check with the advisor. This is Sheila Riffle. I'll check with Mr. Flager, the National Honor Society advisor. I believe that we recorded it. So it should be available somehow for viewing, so I will check.
Very sophisticated technologically, and so how exciting to be able to put that, to operationalize that. Fantastic for everyone who helped with this. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Other questions for our student representatives? Jan, if you're talking, you're on mute.
Just wanted to make a point about winter sports. We, I guess the IAC at this point is saying that we'll start practices on the 19th and events on the 1st. But I don't think we have final word from DPH, and I have a meeting with the regional health authority tomorrow. They're pretty concerned. So not sure how, what is going to take place there. Meeting with athletic, the athletic director also, I believe, is tomorrow. But we're, obviously, we'd love to have it move forward, but we're concerned about, you know, what that might mean for risk for academic programming, too. So more to come on that.
Can I also?
Go ahead, Jan.
That in terms of the musical. Oh, I got muted again, sorry. I actually just had an additional meeting with Mr. Milton today to talk about, you know, a slow start with that and how we might be able to get kids engaged, maintaining obviously all of our safety. One of the, one of the areas of guidance that we're going to be watching is what ends up happening with winter sports. So the requirements for sports happening inside, obviously, there's no spectators, things like that. If we were to move forward with that, we would be looking at, you know, similar requirements if we were to have students rehearsing for a cab race-type experience or something like that. We talked about the limit of students who could be in the auditorium at once. We wouldn't have more larger than a quartet in terms of performances, and probably the majority of performances would be solo's duets. So, you know, we're going to try to make sure that we're aligned with what the CIC and DPH is recommending in terms of moving forward, depending on where we end up ultimately with winter sports, so.
Thanks, Sheila. I appreciate that. Other comments or questions?
This is George.
Go ahead, George.
Actually, a quick question about the midterm decision. And probably this is more directed at Sheila, actually, at this point. What was the rationale for the decision to? I'm not sure if postpone is the right word, basically just pass this year, right? What was the rationale for doing that?
There were several factors involved, Mr. Chang. I think the main one was the level of stress and the level of uncertainty. You know, we needed to make a decision prior to now. And going into the holidays, you know, when we're looking at between Thanksgiving and Christmas, you know, we had certainly had a couple of situations of contact tracing and quarantining at the high school. You know, district-wide, even though we're in the big scheme of things, I think, doing really well in terms of the state. There was a lot of uncertainty with how many students would be remote at that point in time, whether or not we would all be remote, and really looking to use that time for, you know, some quality opportunities. I gave some parameters to teachers. We told them what it, what it could be and what it couldn't be. The couldn't be really was, it couldn't be the high stakes, it couldn't have the high stakes flair that it's had in the past. Nobody needed that. There was some concern about, you know, AP readiness. Of course, we have to be flexible in that regard because they are getting ready for, you know, a big assessment in May. We, at this point in time, don't know if that assessment is going to look as it has traditionally or if it's going to be altered like it was last year. So either way, teachers are, you know, feeling certainly an increased level of responsibility to ensure that kids are ready for that type of assessment, so they're going to look at some type of a practice. You know, and Megan did a great job, I think, of explaining what the different options could be. The one thing that I did ask teachers to do was make sure that teachers of the same course, so multiple sections of the same course if taught by different people, are doing the same thing. So there were, you know, different options on the table. We have a couple of departments that are actually going to use that time to do little mini check-ins with students and have them speak to the skills that they've developed thus far in the year and set some goals for what they need to do going forward. And it was, it was really mainly around the, the stress that typically comes with midterms. Even though 10% of a grade does not necessarily qualify as high stakes, it feels like a high-stakes test. And it's, you know, quite a lot of, you know, you're being, you're asking students to take a comprehensive assessment from the beginning of the year. And in a year like this, it just did not seem the responsible thing to do across the board. And I know that many schools along the shoreline are, took the same, the same approach.
I just wanted to add what Ms. Riffle had said and just provide some examples of like what my classes are doing. So I have a class, my honors English class, is deciding to do an exam tomorrow. It's like half of what a midterm would usually be, and then it's more a review checkpoint. But these exams will be scored, and then if you want, it can count it towards your grade, but it takes off the pressure of having to do well on that exam. And then another class of mine, my AP Spanish class, our teacher is choosing to also have us do kind of a mock exam, and it's broken up over two days. But just to kind of follow that AP format to make sure that we're getting ready for the circumstance to have to take that three-hour-long exam, we're going to have like a mock exam and obviously it won't count towards our grade, but just to kind of get through the motions of doing that three-hour test.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that explanation. I mean, I think it's important that we take the stress off, but we still have that check-in ability. That's fantastic. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions for our student representatives? All right, then. Eileen, did you have a question? Up and you're on mute. I think you were off mute. There you go.
I was going to say that when I listen to them, I'm just so thrilled to have them on the Board of Education as student representatives. They bring a huge dimension of personalization to meetings in terms of what's happening at the high school. Fantastic.
I agree. It's great to have your perspectives, especially in a year like this. It's where things are so unusual. It's good to have everybody's kind of from each angle, so thank you, guys. All right, well, then we will move on. Karen, do we have any correspondence to discuss for the board?
No, the board received no correspondence.
Okay, thank you, Karen. All right, our next item on the agenda is we're looking for a motion to approve our Board of Education regular meeting minutes from our December 8th meeting. Do we have somebody to make that motion? Looks like moved by Eileen and seconded by Karen. All in favor, aye, or show your hands. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Um, it's like.
Because I wasn't present, so.
Thank you, Karina. All right, so moved. And next up on our agenda is our budget presentation. And I will turn it over to our chairman and Julie with an assist by Kaitlin Storty. Special guest this week. Good to see you.
Thank you. Terrific embarrassment. And thank you to all of the administrators who are here tonight because they really represent the initial work of the budget that gets done. And they may have an opportunity to provide some details that you may be interested in, or we may call on them to provide some of those details. As you know, and with apologies to the Budget and Fiscal Committee, who went through this very carefully with us, many thanks. As you know, this process begins back in early October, late September, and the bulk of the work stays in the buildings and at that level until, you know, into the end of October and November, when the central office gets hold of it and begins to do its, I'll say magic, because I do think the business department does do magic when it comes out on the other end in this presentation. Our presentation tonight, unless there's reason to change it, will look very much the same when we go to the Board of Finance. We received quite a bit of support from the Budget and Fiscal Committee and very careful review, which we greatly appreciate. And we think that the presentation that we put together really does do a nice job of sharing with the Board of Education, the community at large, Board of Finance and Board of Selectment eventually, and the whole town, what we really need to run our programs. And that's something that we're incredibly proud of, and you'll see how the percentage increase from year to year shifts significantly because each year we ask for what we need. And as you know, this has been an unusual year and a little bit more difficult to find some good, strong footing on which to build a budget. But we've used some techniques this year that are somewhat different from previous years, and we've used some tried and true techniques to create a very fiscally responsible budget that supports our programming and grows our programming and offers opportunities for students that are personalized and individualized. On the next slide, we included kind of nostalgically, quite honestly, the three goals of our strategic plan, which cease to exist as a strategic plan at June 30th, 2021. But as you also know, the members of the board, Karen is your representative to the guiding coalition for the new strategic plan. We meet this Friday to review the data collected from all the different stakeholder groups and all of the, both through surveys and through focus group meetings with everyone from the board to elected officials, community members, students, parents, staff. Mrs. Goss and I had an opportunity to review some of the raw data recently. And I will tell you that I think that our strategic plan goals from 2016-21 are obviously alive and well because in many instances, people can talk about them and talk about what philosophies, what the philosophies of our school district are. Got some gaps that'll be interesting, and they'll, they'll provide us new goals and action steps. But clearly, we have been on target with the work that we're doing. And we're looking forward to creating the goals and action steps for the, for the next strategic plan and vetting those with you. Next slide. Thank you. So as I said, we ask for what we need each year, and this year has brought in some unique experiences. And yet, I feel like in many ways, we've been able to master them or develop them, improve them. We've been moving forward, and in a year where it could have been very easy to just sort of survive, I think in many ways, we have survived and we have, we have been thriving. Our English learners, English language learners continue to grow and to develop skills. And that is, as you know, a growing population that we need to provide resources to so that they can learn the language and learn the content areas of the subjects that they need to, to master before graduating from Old Sabley High School. We have developed new ways to approach internships. We obviously learned how to do remote learning. Even the board's doing remote learning, right? Everybody's doing remote learning. And we have found ways to innovate professional learning opportunities. Trent, if you could click on English learner, strong longitudinal growth, we'll take a quick look at that. And, oh, my, there it is. It looked like spaghetti before. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Goss to speak to this, but we are very proud of the growth. We have a growing English language learner population. And yet, we are successful with those students. In the Budget and Fiscal Committee meeting, there was a question about a year where the oral proficiencies dropped. And I asked Mrs. Goss to just briefly comment on that tonight.
So that, interestingly, something that I've actually learned from Dr. Chang is that we really need to look at the trends over time. And so any one data point isn't going to tell us the whole story. So when we look at this data, we look at how it, how it looks over many years. Anecdotally, I can tell you that when I talked to the English learner teachers, they, they suggested that there were some, some challenges with the audio in that particular year. The test wasn't recording the way that they were expecting it to, so they weren't sure that those results were as accurate as they would have liked. And additionally, that is a year when we had a significant increase in number of students who were brand-new to the country, and they were coming into our school. And so we may have seen some impact from that. But really, we were looking at the overall trends, and they are going in the right direction. So we continue to be proud of the growth that our students are making.
Yeah, just, this is an interesting point for those who love data like this, like Mrs. Goss does. It's interesting that it's the oral proficiencies that dropped in that year and not, and not the literacy, which kind of would back the anecdotal data about the trouble with the technology. I'll go back, Trent, please. I'm going to move forward to innovative internship opportunities and ask Ms. Riffle if she could just comment briefly on what would mean by innovative?
Absolutely. As you know, we have had a focus and a goal of 100% internship for our students. And that really comes out of experience that a small percentage of our students have been getting for many years. And I'm really proud of the work that our two College and Career Readiness coordinators, Ms. Using and Sarah Fawcett, have engaged in, in terms of developing those opportunities for kids. It's not even so much, yes, certainly COVID and pandemic has opened up a, the opportunities for more remote types of internships. You know, we're in a situation this year where we weren't allowing kids to go out to businesses. And frankly, if we would have been, businesses wouldn't have allowed kids in anyway. But there have been some opportunities for remote meetings, having students attend a staff meeting to get more information, to explore, you know, different questions about a particular profession. We still have some students engaging in internships where they have connection within their family. But going forward, it's really going to be about how we offer those opportunities as students are exploring their, their interests in developing many opportunities, if you will. You have a student who's interested in, in biogenetics as well as speech therapy. And so to do an entire semester's worth of an internship may not be what they aspire to do, but they could engage in, you know, halftime, we're no longer tied to the semester model because students can really design their own opportunities. We had a student this year who found an international health internet module learning opportunity. And so she met with our two coordinators and was able to complete these modules, kind of like almost like a recitals organization. They really forced her to dive into the pros and cons of, of the health field through that lens. So, you know, as Megan alluded to with the advisory piece in our College and Career Readiness project years, there's a much more focused set of activities. Students actually started that today, even though the graduation requirement begins with the class of 2022 officially. Through advisory today, they had juniors filling out reflection forms. Freshmen were identifying skills. They went through a skill checklist. And, you know, were asked to reflect upon where they think their skills are now and where they'd like to develop their skills. And so it'll be a set, I know you said concisely, Ms. Lucille, but there's, it's so much to talk about here. And I would encourage you all to go to the College of Career Readiness website. It's just rich with information. But, you know, there, there's a component where all students will be moved in the same activities, and then by junior year, they start to branch out towards their interests. So I'm very excited about where that's headed. It's still under development in some ways. Really have made some strides since last March. We're excited.
Thank you. We can go back. And I do want to highlight one more thing here. I think that the, the remote learning speaks for itself, but Mrs. Goss, Trent, if you could just click on the innovative professional learning. Mrs. Goss's hard work is embedded here. Professional learning had to shift on a dime as well, and last spring, it was quite a challenge, but we have learned to maximize opportunities there. Amity, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, that's actually an unexpected silver lining. We thought that professional learning would be a disaster online, and what happened in reality is that we are experiencing it more the way research says that professional learning actually works. So in little short doses over a long period of time, because no one wants to sit on a Zoom for an entire six-hour professional learning, they've tended to be broken up into little bits like an hour at a time. Teachers are getting to choose when they want to do this. They're frequently doing it outside the school day, which is a benefit to the district. And they're getting to connect with all sorts of people. We have, we have teachers who are going to national conferences that we never could have afforded to send them to in another year. But they're getting to do that because it's all online. So it really has been an amazing opportunity for professional learning. And teachers are excited for professional learning because there's a lot of stuff that they want to learn right now. So it's, it's been a real benefit to professional learning.
I would say there's nothing like real need to understand new things to really make the professional learning seem incredibly valuable. You can go back, Trent, please.
Jan.
Yeah, Eileen.
There's a lot of background noise coming through on my end, so I don't know if anybody else is hearing it, too. Kind of like.
Yeah, actually, I think, Jan, with other people are speaking. If you can mute your line, I think it feeds back a little, like your little microphone blinks, so I think it's you, unfortunately.
Yeah. You're, you're going to have to tell me when I'm muted and start talking, because I guarantee you I'll do it.
Believe me, I'm there with you. And it's just a good reminder to everybody, if you're not speaking, please mute your line.
So celebrations continued. We'll just move through this one a little bit more quickly. Next slide, Trent, thanks. I wanted, I wanted, if you could click on the online tools that support learning at all levels. Trent, I think, is that one live?
No, these are not live, Jan.
Thank you. I don't know if he's talking or not. But anyway, obviously, we, we've spent a lot of time going through tools that work well in this learning setting. And as Amity said earlier, there's a silver lining because we have learned what can work well, whether we're in a brick and mortar building or not. And then we've gone through the process of collecting and culling so that we go move into this budget process with really good concepts and really good tools to develop learning opportunities for students, no matter what setting we're in. Obviously, the, the socio-emotional learning focus is important. You heard Ms. Riffle talking about it earlier. We've been hearing from students about their concerns about losses that they've experienced over the last, coming up on a year really, in March. But, you know, loss of experiences and opportunities, social time, those, those things, the trappings of, of school and, and social connections that are, have been changed significantly, and the loss that they feel. And Mrs. Bai is working to collect that data. All of our buildings have created goals around supporting students and staff at this time. Amy, you want to talk a little about math programs, that, that particular blue toggle there?
Yes, we were very lucky that both our Bridges Mathematics Program, which is pre-K to fifth grade, and our illustrative math program, which is sixth grade through algebra, provided us with compacted curriculum guides so that teachers don't have to guess about the sequence of lessons that's most appropriate, given that we have fewer, fewer hours with students in person. So they provided all of that for us. They told teachers what not to focus on, and that has been tremendously helpful. I think that the teachers who, who use those math programs have had the most peace of mind going forward because they know that it's a research-based sequence.
And I have to say, the pandemic has given us an opportunity to learn our 21st century skills too. And I don't just mean technology. We've learned how to collaborate and be connected in ways and communicate in ways that we have not, we've not had to do before. And we obviously haven't mastered it yet, but we continue to work on it and improve. And, and that's an interesting story because that's learners from all different age groups. That's me and younger teachers and students, all having to learn together about how to make this, how to make this experience work for us. And I'll pause to see what's going on with the presentation.
Hi, everyone. Guys, I had to stop the presentation. I received a comment from the public that the audio is not working while I'm presenting. So I'm going to pass the presentation to Mrs. Astori, so that way we can have her run it while the audio puts out to the public.
Thank you for illustrating my point about constantly learning.
Yeah. So just give me one second.
I had the pleasure, Mrs. Puccio, of getting to watch a first grader in a remedial reading lesson, and there were two little first graders doing this reading lesson online remotely. And they had a question about some, some vocabulary word. And now, remember, this is a remedial reading lesson, and yet, one of them pasted the, a link to go to, to check out and learn more about this thing. So it's amazing the things that they, that they're able to do.
If I remember correctly, I was looking at the data of the student responses today, and there was a comment about autonomy and how having to go through this has created self-efficacy, self, self-reliance, autonomy. And even the language that the student used was impressive to me. I think we're on slide. We can go right to the next one now. So this is an additional slide. This came from a recommendation of budget and fiscal. We forgot to be proud of this. Our schools are open, and they have been all year. We opened, as you know, in hybrid in September because it was going to be such a, a change. It was such an abrupt change from a year of people being isolated, not connecting socially, being really frightened about what the pandemic, what COVID was, to coming back to school. We came back in hybrid, we eased our way in, and one month later, we were able to open in full. We've been open in full ever since. And the statistic that I heard from the Commissioner of Education a few weeks ago is that about one-third of the districts in the state remain open at this time. The tragedy is that there are districts that never opened yet. And just listening to what our students have to say about that tells me that that is not ideal for the large, for the large number of students out there. And that's why we are working so hard to keep our schools open. Teachers and other staff members are working hard to make sure everybody stays in masks and social distances and washes hands, and it's, it's pretty much a routine at the elementary school. The administrators created a plan that made our buildings about as safe as you could possibly make it, and a lot of work was done to the infrastructure, some of it temporary, some of it not so temporary, to make our buildings as safe as possible for kids. And, and it's why we are open. It has not been easy. It has been a lot of work, and it has taken many resources, most importantly, time and energy of human beings. But it has been worth it. I, as I say all the time, I don't know if this will continue. We obviously have to do what's safest, but I'm so pleased that we are here where we are now, and we're dedicated to continue to do all the things we can do to mitigate the impact of COVID. And with the vaccine right around the corner, at least for our educators, I have to say that I really feel like the, the light is getting brighter at the end of the tunnel, and it's not an oncoming train, I don't think. So our, as you know, our philosophies are built on, on specific statements, documents that we share widely. One is our mission statement, which was at the beginning of this presentation. Another is our theory of action, which is our, our statement of what it is that we adults do, and so that what students can become. And the second part of the theory of action is our profile of a graduate, and of course, our strategic plan. And they are all connected to each other. It's one big matrix that makes what we do work, and the foundational pillars are there listed on the right-hand side of the page. We want our students to leave here independent and able to pursue their interests, their, their future that they've envisioned for themselves. We don't want to feel like we've left them with gaps in that opportunity. This is just a little bit about our programs. If you could click on the high school one, Pam, please. We just want to highlight some of the things that are going on at the high school. Obviously, you can't get it all on a PowerPoint presentation. We'd have to take you to the building and walk you around, and we know that you Board of Ed members know a lot about what goes on in our buildings. But these are things that we're particularly proud of and wanted to highlight for you this year. And of course, our administrators are here, so if you have any questions, they'd be happy to answer them. The middle school, Pam? I want to just mention the online library to enhance student book collection. This was something that had to be done. It was necessity. Students needed to be able to get their hands on books. We didn't know what the, remember, we were dealing with great unknowns about COVID, so we didn't even know if it was going to be safe to put books in kids' hands earlier this year and over the summer. And, and giving them access at home to an online library is incredibly important. Obviously, we've always put a lot of emphasis on extracurriculars. The board has invested in extracurriculars. We are looking now at the high school at an esports opportunity. Again, something you can do during COVID that students are interested in doing, some students are interested in doing. And finally, Goodwin. And Mr. Sutman sends his apologies, he's not well. Obviously, we, this is our largest English learner population, and there's a lot of support there. We're, the synchronous learning that goes on in the classroom or, or remotely is something that has just improved tenfold from the first day we tried to make this work. We continue with collaborative coaching. We have, we create experts right in our, in our buildings and in the, in different areas of expertise and technology, and they make themselves available to their colleagues. And of course, again, the online library. You can go back, Pam, thanks. Let's go up to extracurricular athletics. You know, we have, our athletic director has had a really unusual first year. It started for him, you know, back late spring, where he had to try to pick up the pieces of a, a season that really never took place, and, and no real sense of how to pick up the pieces from that and move on, and then move into the fall. And he did a really great job of keeping fall sports open this year. Also, I, I think that some of the things that Joe talked about earlier with the creative ideas that came from advisors, the fall, the fall radio play was really terrific, if you had a chance to see it, the way the kids have continued to train for sports, even not knowing what would happen to their season. We've really got a lot going on for a small, little high school, and that's true at the middle school too. And so we keep supporting those programs with uniforms, good coaches, opportunities for kids to grow, and opportunities for them to grow, not just in the area of athletics or extracurriculars, but also in the area of leadership and collaborative learning. Okay, Pam? And you know what? Kathy Bai, would you mind terribly, if you could comment a little bit on the work that we're doing in socio-emotional wellness?
Sure. As we know, emotional health is important, you know, in normal times. Well, these sure aren't normal times, and we, this additional social worker came at a perfect time. She's able to get into many of the classrooms, particularly at Goodwin, and teach lessons. Both of our social workers have an increased load in terms of finding supports for families, for connecting them to resources. So we've, we've been able to do, thankfully, a, a lot more in that area. All of our teachers, as you know, are participating in a social emotional learning course, which is kind of a silver lining also, in, in terms of this error that we're in, because it has kind of forced us to stop and really learn coping strategies, how to, how to help our students. And it's really equipping all of our teachers with, with that additional learning. The racial inequity awareness Sheila can talk about more than, than I can, but as we know, this is an important time for that. And, and the work that we have started doing is, is going to make a huge difference for everybody's social emotional health. And in, in terms of the trauma-informed practices, each of our faculties engage in pretty regular learning about what to do for our students who are facing many traumas right now, whether it's, you know, loss of, of family members, loss of income in the family, feeling disconnected. So, you know, I, I'm really pleased with all that we're doing in this area. And, and proud of, of all that we're doing.
It's important to note that we're preparing students for a variety of experiences. No two students are going to have the same future, obviously, and, and not all of our students go on to a predictable post-high school experience of a four-year college. Some go on to two-year schools, some go on to trade schools, others join the military. We have others who stay on and, or go into transition programs, and we have some who go right out into the, into employment. And it's, it's our complex task to prepare them for the future that they've envisioned for themselves, to launch them in a way that allows them to pursue that. And while we were, we were going to look to do a pie chart here to demonstrate how many students go in each direction, first of all, it wouldn't have been particularly remarkable this current year, because so many students did go on to college, so that hasn't always been true. But what is remarkable in this past year is, is the types of different experiences that they went after within the, the post-high school education setting, anything from community colleges, you know, to state colleges, to private schools, to two-year schools. We had two people go into military academies. And so when you think about what we're preparing students of Old Saybrook for, it really is remarkable that each of them can launch and be ready for those different worlds. And, and that's, again, we're a small school district, and so robust programming is, is incredibly important to maintain and grow. Thanks, Pam, you can go forward. And it's important to say too, that we don't value one more than the other. Those are all important to us. We want to be able to give students AP classes and tech classes and hands-on culinary classes because that's, that is a well-rounded student, and that's what we're hoping to create. I think I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Pendleton at this point.
Thank you. So as Superintendent Puccio pointed out, the strategic plan that has been in existence over the past five years is still alive and well, and certainly has been a consideration in putting this budget together in our very unique year that we're experiencing. So it's been a bit of a bridging, if you will, between our current initiatives and moving towards what that new strategic plan that everyone is working on currently might look like. But we know that a lot of these will be continued throughout this next budget process. The goals and challenges of this year, I probably don't even need to mention, I think most of you have experienced them either in your own world, at work, or your personal world. And so, again, we've used some traditional projections and forecasts, and we've had to use some creative ones because we really have not had, the last fiscal year was not a traditional year. And of course, we're building a budget now for a year that we hope is going to be more traditional, but again, we don't know exactly how the plane is going to land yet. So we're working a bit in, in a situation where we're trying to bridge the gap and figure out how to together a responsible budget while taking into consideration some of the changes and circumstances that may be in front of us still. And, and doing that, we have to look at our enrollment, which we've had an updated projection done. We also have created our sustained services budget, which Mrs. Puccio will mention and talk about in a little bit as well. We have always in mind, looking at ways to save on whatever we're moving forward with, whatever our initiatives are through bidding processes, as well as streamlining the kinds of things that we're doing, we're changing. One of the big areas that Mrs. Astori will talk about when we get to the particulars on our budget expenditures or projected expenditures are things like textbooks that had a much harder account at one point in time are transitioning to online resources, which is more in this area of software. So you'll see a shift in some of the things that we, we have in the budget or have additionally had in the past are now traditions and different types of resources. And of course, our best resource or our best way to assess our needs is to, to work with our practitioners. You know, I listen to what they, what I hear them say that their needs are, what they need in the classroom. They're our best resource. They know what they need to make all these, you know, changes happen, and they've been extremely helpful in providing that. Our principals and other administrators. Our principals and other administrators as well have really been so creative and so that's all been part of putting the budget together. We always start with a zero base and I think, Jan, you can speak to that as we move forward.
I'm happy to speak to that. You know, I, I, it's something that as I came up through education, I, I noticed that it's very easy to create a budget if all you want to do is add for inflation and additional shipping and just continue to do the same thing. But that sort of less energetic way of creating a budget really says, carries through to curriculum and instruction and everything else we do. So we start with a zero-based budget and have people really think about what do I need to achieve the goals we need to achieve, given the students are going to be sitting in front of me next year. That's not only a great fiscal exercise, it's an exciting educational exercise for individuals.
Right. And, and as we look at the history of our budget further on in this presentation, I think that becomes very evident. We ask for what we need. We start with, you know, a bottom line at zero and we build from there and, and you'll see the fluctuation in our budgets because needs change from year to year. Always, you know, always have the fiscal responsibility piece in our, in our forefront when we're building the budget, you know, do we really need it? What are the most significant needs? We talked a little bit before about enrollment and staffing. Obviously, those get adjusted and again, you'll see in our slides on staffing, you know, that we've adjusted as needed based on our enrollment. And I think Mrs. Goss and Mrs. By did a great job of talking about the changing educational needs in the models of instruction that we have had to adapt to. Some of them, I'm sure, are going to live with us as we go forward because they've proven to be really, you know, innovative and exciting ways to, to reach all kids. And so it's, it's given opportunity to really be progressive and, and create great, great models for all, all types of learning and all types of students in meeting their needs. The digital platform of resources has been a change in our environment, but I think, again, you know, really positive things have grown from that. And all of this as a result of the impact of COVID, which, you know, again, we can look at it as the glass half full or the glass half empty. And I think we choose to pick the glass half full because some of the things that we've learned throughout this process have been incredibly helpful and resourceful and hopefully we will see that students have benefited greatly from being adaptable and being able to meet their needs as we've gone through this wonderful, crazy time. And as, as you all know, near and dear to my heart is maintaining our facilities and providing clean and self-safe and healthy environments for all kids to learn and for our staff to be able to come to work every day and do the wonderful things that they're doing.
The first part of this presentation, I'll, I'll say the first part, it wasn't half. I think we're more than halfway over, was really the, the what we do. The second half is really more about what it costs to do it. And so this gets into the part of the presentation that really is for the, for the money people who want to, you know, our, our board of finance will be interested in this information. What, what is it that we're asking for and why? And what are we doing with it? So the, the general statement I'll say here before turning it over to Mrs. Pendleton is we are asking for a very small increase this year. And the why is because three of our four largest drivers of expenses are actually reduced in this 21, 22 budget requests. And with that, for the details, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Pendleton.
So you can see here that this represents 88% of our budget. It really is the lion's share of the entire budget. And so it's very, it's very easy to deduct from this that while salaries have gone up and not as much as the overall increase in the teacher and teacher contract, as well as the other bargaining units, the percentage is, is less than what we have negotiated because staffing has changed and numbers have changed as far as staffing or the number of staff members that we, we are proposing in this budget. But then, you know, we look at benefits and we've had, we've been very successful with our consortium and that has really started to prove and, and weigh, and weigh out as we've moved through the years. We're hitting our, you know, going into our fifth and sixth, completing our fifth year, going into our sixth, and now we're seeing the fruits of that labor really begin to pay off. And as well as Mrs. By and her, her staff have continually decreased tuitions and brought students back and really maintained a very fiscally responsible budget when it comes to, you know, tuition placements and, and the like. And then finally, transportation. We are seeing an increase, a decrease there as well because we are consolidating runs and trying to find efficiencies in every possible area we can.
When our, when our per pupil expenditure is identified for the, for the school district, parts of what we think about are the, the expenses to educate children. That's our goal. That's our one major goal is to educate children and to produce healthy graduates from our school district. Some situations are more expensive than others. Some students' programming is more expensive than others. It's more expensive to educate at the high school level than it is at the elementary level. That's just a fact in most school districts. And some programming is obviously more expensive. Not only are the ones that you see here, but also students with socio-emotional needs, language learners, remediation of any kind, and, and then also these categories, special education 504, frame-reduced lunch. These are, these are students who can require more resources and it's really imperative that we provide those resources for them. What you see here is the raw numbers and the percentage of the total population over the last three years in each of those major categories. And this is our English language learner chart and we asked Mrs. Goss to confirm for us how many different languages are spoken or represented here. And the answer right now is nine. And they include a variety such as Bosnian, Spanish, Portuguese, Korean, Vietnamese. What did I miss, Mrs. Goss? There were some other great ones. Tyrol, Mandarin.
Ooh, I always miss the last one.
I'll find it. I know I wrote it down somewhere. So, but really, we're talking with some of those other ones, some of the more unusual ones for this region, we're talking about ones and twos. Really, we're talking about Spanish with some increasing Portuguese as well. This is, this is an interesting story. Remember last year, we showed you how many different mandates were flying at us? So I'm watching the legislature as they meet, they're in session and at this point, bills are being offered up by both the Senate and House side and they're busy, let me tell you. There's some big nebulous pieces of legislation like supporting students who have been impacted by COVID. And those are obviously placeholder bills that will be fleshed out, but it's the fleshing out that's very interesting because as you know, you've heard us say it before, we often agree with the philosophy and the logic behind the legislation. It's just more often than not comes a mandate with, without funding for the mandate. I'm hoping that that won't be true. I'm hoping that maybe some of the funding that is coming from the federal government to bring relief from COVID, there's a second round that's supposed to be coming. I'm hoping it'll get funneled into the right places so that the pieces of legislation and the State Department initiatives really can be funded. As I mentioned in the Budget and Fiscal Committee meeting, Connecticut Association of Public Schools superintendents has worked for almost three years on a, what is a robust decade and a half financial plan for Old Say, for Old Saybrook, I wish, for a state of Connecticut's public schools, charter schools and magnet schools. And we are touting it up in Hartford and hoping that we can get people to see that it's a sensible and less expensive in the long run idea than some of the one-off ideas that tend to become problematic for us to implement and not really, not really seamlessly created so that it can make a long-term significant difference. But what, what burdens us are mandates, although we had temporary relief from them this year. The pandemic, of course, there's just no avoiding talking about it. The executive orders, both federal and state executive orders that came to us, sometimes they cost us money, sometimes they brought us money, but it's been an interesting rollercoaster ride. And of course legislative action, and there was none last year. There was absolutely no legislative action that impacted education that was to any great degree, but I would imagine it looks like we'll, we'll address that this year. There'll be plenty. Julie, this is you?
Yes. So, so this is a representation of the three years of the teacher's contract. The first year, obviously, is the present. And so right in the middle there, you can see what Old Saybrook settlement was against the state average. And, and so those are the salaries that are represented in this proposed budget.
I just want to say before we move on that the reason why we share the teachers group with you every year is obviously that is our largest group. That is our largest, that is a certified group and so the salaries are, are, tend to be higher and it's a group that goes to binding arbitration. So when we negotiate with this group, we're obviously very much influenced and impacted by the way contracts settle across the state. And that's an important message because not everybody in the community might know that. Thanks, Julie.
So here is our, our history of teaching positions and again, we have a net reduction in this budget over the prior year and adjusted for enrollment and all of the needs that have been proposed. Again, listening to our administrators and what the needs of our students are. And Jan, please chime in if there's something specific you want to highlight.
Yeah, I just want to mention that, as you know, we have tried to share staff and continue to look for ways to share staff outside of the district, but also inside the district. And one of the things that we are, we are at a point that we really need to look carefully at is the schedules of the three schools, particularly the middle school and high school schedules and bringing them closer together. I talked earlier about the importance of maintaining and growing robust programming for students. And then the second goal of a good schedule would be maintaining staff full-time because what we don't want to start doing is piecemealing positions and having people working only part-time. We will lose good, talented people. So while we may in the future need to work with fewer staff members, we want to the degree possible to make sure that they can be full-time staff members. So that might mean sharing staff between buildings. We do it now. We could do it more seamlessly and we're going to look at schedules. And as I said to the Budget and Fiscal Committee, that might also mean looking at start times of schools to match them up a little bit more. And there could be a nice opportunity there to address some concerns, but that work is, is on the table and has begun.
So this slide is our most recent per pupil expenditure that has been audited. And ironically, we fall in the middle, which is where we were last year as well of these five communities that are represented here. But our per pupil actually dropped from last year to this proposed year to 455, by $455. So we've actually seen a decline. I think other districts with the declining enrollment have probably experienced a little bit of the same, but we fall right in the middle and that's kind of where we would expect to be with Westbrook being a much smaller district. So their per pupil, you know, being less economy and scale for them to, to work with. And then a larger district like Clinton on the other side of us having a larger enrollment. And so therefore, some of the standard types of expenses get dispersed over a larger number. So therefore, their per pupils slightly lower.
And I think we said it was about $400 per pupil. Is that right?
Four, four fifty-five per pupil.
That is, that is significant when you look at the total cost for a year-over-year change. Certainly was not the goal of the budget. Again, we ask for what we need. It just happens to work out that way this year.
So while we have one more slide before we get to the expenditures and that has, it represents our consortium for health insurance. And it has been, it looks like Pam, you're having a little technical difficulty. Oh, there it is.
I had to go to a different screen to unmute myself. So if you can, if you can see this at the moment?
We can.
Okay, perfect.
We can. And so this represents sort of a graphic of what the state, state of Connecticut trend in health insurance is compared to what Old Saybrook's rates have been set under the consortium. And you can see that in the years represented here, there's only been one year where we were above trend and now this year, it looks like our proposed increase will be flat. It will be zero at this moment in time. That may be adjusted slightly as we move forward. We haven't set those rates yet. However, we're now starting to see that the consortium and all the years of experience and building, building a standard there with our, our other four towns is starting to pay off. So hopefully that trend continues where we stay below the national and the state trend. That's the goal of this consortium in, in general. And then this again, as Superintendent Puccio pointed out, we look at our largest group. So this is really the teachers' data and it's one group within our health insurance. And so we wanted you to see the state plan against our rates. And just to give you a point of reference, the overall plan for just the teachers is about a $65,000 savings from the state plan. So if our teachers were on the state plan, we would be paying slightly more just for that, that group. And then Mrs. Lestordi is going to give you the detailed information. These are all interactive and they have all the expenditures, expenditures broken down by each of these general categories.
Thank you. These categories are bits and pieces of our accounts payable. So for the most part, our non-personal related expenditures. And behind each block, we have the opportunity to look at the detailed information. And before I go into the details, I wanted to share with you that this past year, as has been mentioned, there was a different way we needed to look at last year's expenditures. Each area, particularly in the maintenance and facilities area for our buildings, we needed to look at, has the expenditure that we have on record been affected by the closing of schools since March? And in that case, where previously we would look at the historical annual expense and take that as an indicator of what to project moving forward for certain areas that were definitively affected by the closing of the buildings, we had to determine, are we going to consider this or are we kind of going to look at that year as an anomaly and not have it influence what we think might happen next year? So with that in mind, we went through several different categories and did analysis of back to fiscal year 2017, actual expenditures through fiscal year 20, actual expenditures. We looked at a four-year average. We looked at a three-year average. And then we also looked at our current budget and then developed what we thought would be the best and most accurate number for the proposal for fiscal year 22. In some cases, that meant we were rightsizing, whether it be the irrigation system that was added at the middle school while a budget was under develop, under development prior to prior to knowing what the actual expenditures would be and realizing that needed to be right-sized, that we did not have sufficient funds in that category for what our actual expenditures were going to be. Conversely, there were some areas that didn't have the level of the expenditures that we had planned for, and we could reduce those. So I will start with a quick look at water, electricity and natural gas to give you an example of the information that was here. This includes, as we discussed, the addition of irrigation. Year 20 budget of $68,325. We are increasing the proposed to $91,950 for water throughout the district. And a lot of that is largely related to, we had under budgeted for the middle school utilization. Keeping in mind that the weather changes continually, whether we have a wet year or a dry year can also significantly affect whether we need to irrigate as much or not. So in this case, we looked over a broad range of years, once the irrigation system was in, to determine where we really needed to be. Conversely, our natural gas, we had steady utilization and we could reduce that a bit. And as far as electricity, we had a situation where we had leases or rebates that we had received for installation, upgrading lighting and controls. And with that, we were able to reduce our electricity bills, but at the same time, rates were increasing. So once we evaluated our needs, we determined that that line needed to increase as well. Moving to maintenance and repairs, you can see we had some savings that we could realize in our 430 account, which is general repairs and maintenance. That includes our contracted services. And in keeping up our maintenance and our contracted services, our overall repairs have been mitigated so that we were able to realize or project that we could reduce the request by approximately $35,000. Julie will speak to the capital plan, which is where you see a reduction on the 450 account for construction services. So we were able to realize the savings there as well. I will go through briefly each one. You have the opportunity to review that as well. And if at the end of the presentation you want additional questions, we can address those at that time. Our communications and printing includes our technology leased services, so our copiers, our communication purchase services, which are when we bring speakers into classes. And then advertising and printing services, although our printing has reduced, we have had some increases in advertising, particularly in trying to recruit staffing. And we use different sources such as Indeed. But we're looking to hold most of those pretty flat. Travel, you will see a significant reduction in 510 transportation. When we bring students back in district for special education, we're also to able, able to realize the savings for the cost of that transportation. And that's a piece of what you see here. Interschool travel, we have some savings, and that has to do with whether it be contractual mileage reimbursement, including when we have teachers who are sharing between buildings. So perhaps if that situation were to change and we had more staffing share between buildings, we might need to adjust the actual number for next year. But that's not something that we can readily determine until we're in the school year itself, when we realize how the staffing will shake out. Professional learning. Director Goss had mentioned our new opportunities for some online learning, which has enabled us to realize a savings, a significant savings in professional development, as well as realizing some of those funds are going to be deferred to summer staff compensation after the strategic plan has been determined. We have budgeted for our teachers to have two days during the summer where they will be paid to work that strategic plan into curriculum. And conferences and travels, we expect for the next year to continue to see a decreased request for those types of experiences as I think we're all still a little conservative in our expectations for travel. Property insurance and workers' compensation is staying flat. So that's good news. Classroom, office and cleaning. Here has transition to one-to-one devices. Students, Chromebooks are no longer meet the threshold to be considered equipment. They're considered a supply. So where we will have a decrease in technology equipment, there will be somewhat not a complete offset in supplies. As we were able to add so many devices this year, we would only need to add one class level as we have the seniors leaving. I believe at this point, they still have laptops with the thoughts that those laptops will be taken out of service. The juniors moving up will have their device, and then the incoming students, we would need to provide devices for. So it is a reduced cost compared to what we've done this year, but it is something that will increase overall in the supply category. Cleaning supplies and maintenance, we are expecting to continue an increased utilization for cleaning for the foreseeable future. I wanted to make sure we had allowed for that. And our medical supplies are strictly the general ones for the nurses' offices and not the PPE that we've been purchasing for the current pandemic. Gasoline and diesel is pretty flat, so that is good. Software and workbooks, as was mentioned previously, technology licensing has increased significantly as we've moved to more distance learning, but have also provided an opportunity for us to review a wide range of options. We looked at everything we currently have this year. It was reviewed with Director Goss and our technology department, as well as input from our instructional leadership team to see the things that we are using that are working well and that we would like to continue moving forward. And that includes some e-textbooks and resources. So you'll see in the same slide that there is a slight reduction in those textbooks and workbooks, which pretty much leaves math consumable workbooks as our major item to purchase in that area and the shift towards the technology licensing. Technology equipment, as I had mentioned, you'll see the reduction here. Additionally, we have reduced what we had anticipated for repairs and maintenance. We do have warranties and guarantees for repairs on all the Chromebooks. So we will definitely see a decreased need for repairs that would need to be sent out and not covered under the guarantee. Vehicles and equipment, the large reduction that is noticeable here is for the time being, and I think Jan might speak to this as well. We are not looking to purchase a significant amount of furniture as we had moved to a model where it was more independent or group work for furniture. And then this year, we had to go back to more independent seating. And we had stored what we could, well, the majority of what we had that we would foresee using in the future. And therefore, they're looking to review what our needs will be and take a year and see how things are working before we do any more major furniture purchases.
The only thing I would add to what Mrs. Lestorte said is it's time to press pause on this. We've invested in furniture that matches the educational philosophy of the district. And now it's, it's time to see how that, how that all settles out as we implement new technology and new ways of approaching learning, which we learned about in this last year, and how that ends up playing out for furniture. So it's just a pause, and let's wait and see.
Thank you. And last, but not least, fairly steady for dues and fees. This is for memberships. It includes curriculum-based memberships as well as district-wide, Cape, Connecticut Center for Learning, I believe is here, our membership for that, caps and so on. So that takes care of this slide. Is, before I move on, are there any questions on this slide in particular?
Pam, it's Karina. I just have a comment. I think the first box that you opened, the one that has construction, just the word construction on the backside, there's a, there's a typo. See, it's just, I just checked the spelling on construction. See, there's an extra T right there.
I know, I was gonna add that too.
I'm trying to pad the budget with an extra T. Thank you. I will make sure we get that corrected. Anything else? All right.
Right. So these are the areas within the capital, proposed capital budget, and most of them, Mrs. Lestorte already mentioned. But I will just highlight that the items in which we are looking to include this year is a short list, but an important one. We're going to hopefully do some countertops and cabinets in the Goodwin School Library, which got a little bit of a facelift last year with new carpet and flooring in there. At the middle school and high school, we're going to, you know, have our usual seeding and fertilizing and field maintenance that we do every year, and that represents a little over $40,000. There are some electrical updates and some HVAC repairs. Those would be things like rooftop units, unit ventilators, piping. I mean, this week alone, we've had a couple of crazy things happen. So those are, those are always unanticipated. It's very hard to predict what, you know, where we might have a problem or what might not be working properly. And so as our buildings age, those accounts may grow. In fact, I would probably be willing to be a betting woman on that one, that they will grow because, you know, we're just seeing things age and wear out. And then general facility repairs, those are things that, you know, need to be repaired throughout the course of the year. They can be little things like, you know, a repair to a wall or a window, glass repair, that kind of thing. And so again, we put in an amount so that we can make those repairs should we need to. And then finally, as Mrs. Lestorte mentioned, we've purchased most of our classroom furniture. There's a small amount left in there for high school furniture needs. But other than that, there's been a fairly significant decrease in the capital budget.
Yeah, if I could just comment on that before we move on. First of all, I just want to point out to Megan and Joe that it is 8:30. So I know you probably have a thing to, more than welcome to stay, but I wouldn't want to keep you either. I just wanted to point out on the capital, there's a significant decrease, as Mrs. Pendleton said, it's actually about halved at what it was last year. And part of that, part of it is the scheduling of our, our five-year capital plan, but also part of it is that we were closed down last spring, and there was no better time to get things done. So between the spring and the summer of this past year, there's a long stretch of time, which is considered a gift. Usually you're rushing projects in July and August. And we, we took advantage of that time to get some things done. And so things that would typically have been in this budget are not this year.
And I think it's worth noting that, that I do, you know, I think we're going to see those numbers climb in future budgets, again, due to the age of our buildings. But also, a number of the items that we have in our capital plan scheduled for out years are large-ticket items that would probably be more suited for the sinking fund. For instance, the middle school boilers and perhaps a boiler for this building at some point and Goodwin School. So they're going to be, you know, those are large-ticket numbers, you know, quarter of a million dollars and upwards. Caving of parking lots. We have a couple parking lots still left to, to be paved, you know, in the out years. So I just want it to be known that there are some large items, you know, they're not going away. And we would, we've kept our buildings up so, so well that we, you know, we want to make sure that these are on the radar for the board as well as the Board of Finance.
Also a good time to point out that in your budget book on page 63 of 64, it references the sinking fund and some projects that are marked for the sinking fund as well, which is that those dollars that are kept on the town side for just this sort of thing, so that we don't get hit with a huge bill that drives a change in our budget in any one year. Five, Pam? So the end of the fiscal story that we're, that we're telling tonight is that at the end, we are looking for really what is tantamount to a zero-based, a zero increase practically. It's a 0.24% increase, $65,000 increase in a 20, almost $27 million budget. And that work was developed, as I said, over the fall. If we did nothing but open up the doors again and didn't carefully look at all of our line items and determine where monies could be saved, where we needed to right-size, where we needed to grow things, we would have ended up with a $782,000 increase year-over-year from this current budget. When the administrators finished their level of work, they were able to drive that dollar amount down and still offer the program we need. And then eventually here at Central Office, we were able to consolidate, to plug in those numbers for transportation, health benefits, what is really a relatively small increase in salary and, and offset it with the capital expenses and come up with this 0.24% increase over the current year. So at the end of the day, it feels like much ado about nothing because here we are an hour and a half later, and what we're asking for is such a small increase. But we respect the fact that these are taxpayer dollars, and this is what we need this year. We do not need more. This is what we need. And that's a point that we'd like to make with the Board of Finance and with the community that we ask for what we need in each year. And we try very hard to be respectful of the fact that these are, these are public funds we use, and it's really important to us that we have the trust of the public and so use their money wisely. This is just a budget history list. Everything, of course, except this year is approved budget. And you can see, it has changed a lot. I inherited the 2013-14 budget, and the budgets after that have been the work of this team. And our final slide, this is that interactive slide. I hope you had an opportunity to take a look at it before tonight's meeting. You can click on any of the key boxes, salaries, benefits, and you can get the dropdown of the line items and what's in them. And the story here is our budget is primarily salaries, benefits. We are a people business. I know we tell that story every year, but that is the reality. And because three of the four big-ticket items went down this year, our budget is able to come in at such a low increase. And we're proud of that. We're very proud of that. That was never our goal. We did not set out for with a certain dollar amount in mind. That's not how we budget either. We budget for what we need. And that's what we present to you this evening, a budget that really represents what Old Saybrook Public Schools needs to move forward next year. I think it's important to say, not so much in this setting, but when we get to larger groups of folks, that this year's unique and next year may be very different. The number may be very different, but we, but this is the number we are able to present this year. Our final slide just, it just brings us back to the philosophical. What is it that we do? The context for our request? What is it that we do when we, when we engage in this process of asking for funds to run our schools? And this describes it for you. And thank you for your attention to what I know was a long presentation, but a really important story to tell you as you consider your next steps.
Thanks so much. Thanks so much, Jan and Julie and Pam and everyone for your participation in this presentation tonight and all of your hard work. You know, it absolutely shows, especially in the level of detail and the excellent job you guys did on the book especially. That was incredibly helpful. That was incredibly helpful. Um, George, I don't know if you have any, um, other comments or kind of closing comments that you'd like to make your, in regards to the budget before we open it up for questions?
No, I don't. Uh, and again, I just, just, uh, for all the people who were at Budget Fiscal, I want to thank all the board members who were there. And, you know, this is the second time and so a lot of time was definitely on your part, so I appreciate that. Um, you know, great discussion at the Board, uh, the Budget Fiscal, and again, great discussion presentation here. And so, uh, I think the consensus from the, uh, Budget Fiscal is that this is a very sound and budget. And so I think the consensus was that to go forward with this from the Budget Fiscal Committee certainly. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Um, so at this point, I'd like to open up for questions from the board. Does anybody have any questions or comments that you want to make in regards to the, the budget presentation? Eileen, go ahead.
Fabulous presentation. Um, and I think it's very, um, it's one that the public really will, will really understand it well um, in terms of what we're trying to accomplish and how honest we are and that there isn't any padding in this budget. And it's as Jan said, um, we ask for what we need and we justify it with what we need. So maybe that leads me into, that's okay?
Go ahead.
So it just is, I think, uh, this is slide, um, seven. It talks about, you know, high school and the different departments. And so question is maybe for Sheila Riffel, says, beginning with the class of 2022, all students must meet graduation credit requirements in a college and career and career readiness. So were they not meeting them before? And what are the differences in now?
Well, the specific credit requirement was put in place by the board last spring. So while we've been working towards increasing the number of students who are involved in internship, um, in, internship opportunities, um, attaching some credit to it has really helped, I think, solidify for students, um, the, the importance of it. I mean, they, obviously they, they ultimately deep down know it's important, but you know, for a freshman or a sophomore, it's often hard to think beyond what they're doing next semester. So, um, you know, our, our college and career readiness program now involves a series of activities that lend themselves to half of that credit that everyone will do. And then the other half of the credit, um, comes from that personalized nature where students, you know, can work with, uh, whether it's teacher, a, a group of teachers, our career, college and career readiness coordinator specifically, a counselor to develop some personalized opportunities for them to explore, um, you know, different fields outside of, you know, the brick and mortar and really get some hands-on opportunities.
And the five early college experiences, is that some acceptances?
Say that again, the early college, oh, those are, those are UConn, um, those are the ECE courses.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, every year, teachers have an opportunity, um, to apply, uh, to UConn or appeal to UConn for offering a course that would allow students to earn credit, uh, dual credit. So they get credit in high school, but also credit, uh, a UConn transcript. So we have five ECE classes being taken currently.
Five at, at UConn.
They're taken at, at Old Saybrook High School. The teachers have been, um, certified by UConn to be able to teach those courses. So for instance, physics, um, we call it 1201 and 1202 because that's what UConn calls it. So if students get a C or better in our, our physics class with our certified teacher, then they also get that, that three-credit equivalent on a transcript that they can transfer to most other colleges if they choose not to go to UConn.
Thanks so much. I think, and Jan had also mentioned it, that for many years, you know, people would look at our high school and think, well, it's a small high school, but we always, as a board, um, really felt that regardless of the numbers, needed to be a comprehensive high school. And so with that understanding, when you see this list of, um, challenges and also experiences, I think it's valuable when you put the arts down because it really takes a look at what we're all about, which is personalization. And the fact that you added art, chorus and band, and then art, you know, so it really creates a very well-rounded student.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other question I have is probably for, um, social emotional wellness, um, and about the social worker. So is the social worker, any of them bilingual?
Actually, one of them is. Yeah, the one, the one at Goodwin is bilingual.
And do they separate, Kathy? And do they separate them, you know, how do you separate them through the district? Are they assigned to a school or?
So right now we have two social workers, uh, and so we have .8 at Goodwin, .8 at the high school and .4 at the middle school.
I think this is a good time for us to mention again, uh, that while we have an overall reduction in staffing, we do have, uh, built into the 21-22 budget, a request for an additional social worker.
Important. And the, just lastly, the racial and equity awareness at Old Saybrook High School. What a year to be doing that beside the pandemic, um, Black Lives Matter and many other things. So is that right now just an initiative going on at the high school or, um, operating, you know, just based on some of the situations that we're looking at, just in terms of what we're offering for curriculum? And that's part of the budget, but still.
I can, I can speak for the high school. I certainly know that it's a conversation that has been had district-wide. Um, in terms of, of the work, uh, we're kind of building it as we go. We've started with some, um, training and exploration opportunities with our faculty. Our next step is to add students to that mix. We have a group of students who have reached out and said, I want to be a part of whatever we do going forward. Um, so, you know, I know that there's, I don't want to speak for Jan and the other schools, obviously, but I know that there is a need. Um, we've recognized a need and there's interest, uh, across the board. It's just figuring out age-appropriate, you know, types of, of ways to explore what is available to help educate and, and reflect.
And are they looking a little bit, Sheila, um, into the social studies curriculum? You know, in terms, I just heard something on public radio all about that from on a college level, about how they need to really take a look at what we're teaching kids.
Yeah, we have, um, we have some teachers, um, attending a, um, a, an eight-workshop, um, series on culturally responsive education. Um, Joe and I are also attending a separate, uh, I think there's teachers actually at every building doing that. Is that correct, Eileen? Yeah. So, um, I think that involves certainly, uh, a, a, a close-up lens on social studies curriculum, but, but more importantly, a, a close-up lens on curricula across the board. Uh, we do have our, our Latino Studies and African-American Studies course that is, um, we had no students signed up for it for first semester. So we moved both courses to second semester and now we have some students, uh, jumping on board. So that's a piece that, you know, while ultimately it, it, it certainly shouldn't have to be separate. Um, we're following a state mandate in that regard. Um, and, you know, teachers in the social studies department at the high school, I know, are, um, continue to develop different opportunities for students to choose, uh, how they'd like to explore our history, um, from a socially-charged linge, if you will. Um, and, you know, they're, they're, that work will continue.
Thanks so much. I know the district is looking at a complete assessment of diversity. Thanks so much, Sheila. I appreciate it. And Kathy.
Sure.
So are there, um, questions or comments in regards to the budget presentation? Um, go ahead, Jan.
Tara, I just want to commend Jan and, and the team. I, I, obviously you did yeoman's work. I think it's an excellent budget. Um, I think the presentation was thorough. The book is well-done and, um, I'm, I'm ready to say, I would recommend that we adopt it and, um, move forward, let the administration move forward to the, um, Board of Finance.
Thanks, Jan. I appreciate your, your comments. Um, other comments or questions from, uh, the board? All right, so, you know, Jan, um, Furman provides us a, a good segue. Um, you know, as I said, at, at the beginning of the meeting, um, we have the opportunity tonight as a board to, um, move to adopt this budget as the board's budget and move it forward to the Board of Finance. Um, and so if the board feels that you're ready to do that, you know, I'd look for a motion to move this budget forward. Um, otherwise, um, as I said before, we could certainly, um, pause and give, you know, everybody a chance. If they feel like they need more time, uh, we could move it to a special meeting to continue a discussion, um, if the board feels that's necessary. Um, so I'll open it up at this point if, um, anybody wants to make a motion to adopt this budget and move the budget forward.
I'll make a motion to move the budget forward.
All right, so we have a motion from Eileen and it looks like a second from Jan Furman. Um, any further discussion? All right, so all in favor, um, show of hands and I to move the budget forward, I. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, it looked like that was unanimous. Um, so, so moved.
If I could just, uh, say a few words of thanks, um, first of all to the board, especially to those folks on the Budget and Fiscal Committee who diligently sat through this, uh, twice and, uh, were so supportive. Uh, thank you very much for moving this forward tonight. I think it's great that we're going to get in front of the Board of Finance early, um, while everyone is still fresh, if there is such a thing at this time of year, um, and in this year. Uh, and I, of course, want to thank the administrators, uh, particularly Julie Pendleton, Pamela Sturdy, and, and everybody you see here. You just really work very hard to put a very careful, uh, plan together for all of you.
Thank you guys very much and, and thank you again, George. Go ahead if you got a comment.
I, I, no, again, I mean, I, thank you for everybody again, but I just want to make, uh, a couple of comments now that this budget is going to the, uh, Board of Finance. If I can just make two comments for, uh, the Board of Finance presentation. One, I think just sort of, you know, sort of following up on Eileen's comment, I mean, that, you know, at some point, these slides become those slides. And so her question about the wording in the college and career readiness for the high school, uh, it could, if you don't have the context, it could come across a little bit negative. Or it just seems like until now, we didn't do it, right? And this is the, this is the, the font, the small print that says, beginning with the class of 2022, all students must meet, right? And so the, if you don't have the context, it does come across as a vacation that prior to this, we didn't do something right, right? And so it has a negative connotation or negative meaning and that's certainly not intent. So maybe it's just a change of wording because, you know, these slides have a life of their own outside and people, so we didn't have a, they couldn't interpret incorrectly. So that's just one comment. And I, I think Eileen's question essentially had, had some confusion there, right? So.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, um, and I was going to jump in and say this really, those are amended. The, we had a requirement for, uh, a school-to-career opportunities, but not this formal and not this grand. Uh, we've been building those. So we can talk about those in the context of the strategic plan and how they have become our brand to, um, to reflect the philosophies and the goals of the plan. Uh, a little bit derailed last year, obviously, and that gave us an opportunity to, to rebuild. So we can, we can find a way to change up the language on that slide just a little bit and then speak to it.
I mean, even if, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this on the fly, right? But even just say something like, beginning with the class of 2022, students will, I mean, as you said, right, is, there's enhanced readiness. And so students will meet an enhanced graduation readiness, right? So it, it has a connotation of it's, it's a bigger and better improved, um, putting it differently before, right? So, yeah, um, it's just a simple one or two-word addition. I think it's all that's necessary. Uh, and if I make, the other comment I have is, is this book here, I think that this would be budget book, right? And I suspect that the Board of Finance will get something very close to this. And again, Pam did a fantastic job in terms of addressing all the components with the major changes. And, and in the past, in the Board of Finance, what I've noticed is that they seem to focus in on all the line items and have at least two digits on the plus side. They never seem to care about the ones that go down by double digit on the negative side. So I think Pam's done a great job in terms of addressing all those. Uh, the only one that I thought that was missed was the retirement. Um, like this is, this is page 55 of the book. And then the retirement, uh, I think it's, uh, count numbered 230, and it's up 13.7%. And, you know, it's just a question, I mean, just, just in terms of just being ready for, if there was a question, why is your timing going up, right? So, I mean, I'm sure there's a reason and it's just, uh, and if you guys have thought about it, then the reason will be there. So that's the only comment I have.
Actually, the town gives us the number and they significantly increased our contribution. So, um,
From 8.75, 11%.
Well, then you'll push it back at them then.
Exactly. That's a great one, George.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's actually, it's a great clarification, actually, you know, that that's a contri, it's a contribution as opposed to, um, an expense, you know, so I, I think that's great. Actually, it was a good catch, George. I didn't, I didn't catch that one. So that was, that was a good one.
A town mandated contribution, I might add.
Okay.
We don't, we don't really have any say.
I just have a question about process. I, I know that with the, you know, said that the budget could be approved, I think, by the Board of Finance. Will that, what does the process look like after the presentation next Tuesday is really my question?
Typically, uh, sometime in March, the first select man, uh, moves us to the steps that we take to go to the public hearing and then to the full vote. But good, good question, Karina. I don't know what, how that will be different this year. If the executive order will still allow a somewhat different process. Um, I, I don't know if that's one of the executive orders that's being renewed, um, or if they'll let that one die. Um, there's so many, uh, questions that are still unanswered about executive orders and even the emergency status, which is supposed to end in February. Good question. I will, I will continue to watch that.
Thanks. Thanks, Karina. All right, so, um, any further questions or comments before we move on to our next agenda item? All right, then. Uh, Eileen, do you have a question? I think you're on mute.
I'm gonna say, I found that retirement line. I don't mean to, you know, prolong the meeting, but there's all these numbers and maybe I can talk to you about it later because I'm not quite sure what they're talking about.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Eileen. Um, all right, so at this point, um, the board's gonna look to go into, um, executive session and just, you know, from a housekeeping perspective, those of you who won't be joining us in executive session, um, you'll need to drop. Um, and so at this point, I'm gonna look for a motion, um, to enter executive session to discuss a, a collective bargaining agreement, inviting in, um, Superintendent Pruccio and Julie Pendleton. Um, can I get a motion for that, please? Uh, so moved by Alan and seconded, it looks like by Jan Furman, um, all in favor, I.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so moved. And let's give Trent a second to get a setup. And thank you, Sheila and Krista, and everyone. Thank you.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I get another comment?
All right, uh, can you pause this for one more second? All right, so Trent, it looks like we're back in, uh, business.
Yeah, Tara, let me know when you're ready for a motion.
Okay. We're good. Okay. Um, so it is, uh, 9:16 PM and we're gonna come out of executive session. Um, and I would look to the board for a motion to accept the, um, collective bargaining agreement as presented.
So I'll just, just expand on that a little bit, Tara. So you, move to approve the tentative agreement between the OS School Custodians Union and the Old Saybrook Board of Education as presented?
Excellent. Thank you, Karen. And do you have a second for that? Jim, is that you seconding it off? Okay, um, all in favor, I. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It didn't cost us a nickel in legal fees.
Yeah.
Just want to say that.
So that, that right there is an excellent thing, too. Thank you all, um, and thank our partners, um, on the, the custodial staff as well for their, um, generous, um, negotiations. All right, so at this point, um, just a quick, some quick reminders. So, um, the Board of Finance presentation meeting, Jan, is the 19th, I believe, which is a week from today.
Yes.
Fair enough. Um, we do have a Budget and Fiscal Committee meeting scheduled for the 26th, which I, I don't believe we'll need at this point. Um, and then our next regular meeting is on January 26th at 7:00 PM. And, uh, with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Moved by. Moved by Eileen, seconded by Karina. All in favor, aye? Any opposed? No abstentions, thank you. All right, thank you all for your participation tonight, and thank you so much for meeting so prepared to discuss our budget. I genuinely appreciate it. The swift approval of that was appreciated. Thank you guys. Good night, see you all soon.